April twenty fifth, excuse me, April twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty five, six P M. City Council Chambers, one eleven East Maple. Mister City Manager, I may have you tee this next one up. It's a council-sponsored item resolution formally assigning oversight responsibility for the general obligation bond that was passed by our voters on April eighth, two thousand and twenty five. Mister City Manager, I'll turn it over to you to kind of frame this item if you would, please.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mister Mayor and members of the council. As the body will recall, as we were discussing accountability and transparency for any of the bond questions that may have been approved by the voters, question two, which deals with the city streets, sidewalks, and bridges, it was discussed that part of the accountability and transparency around that issue may be employed by the Street Improvement Oversight Committee. Right now, the ordinance or the resolution that established that body, however, speaks just to their oversight of the half-cent sales tax, which, of course, later this evening you'll hear an update on that. So to memorialize that conversation that was had, Councilmember Stewart asked that we go ahead and get action before the body to memorialize that. I would like to defer to Councilmember Stewart at this time for any additional thoughts or comments that you would like to impart, sir.
Thank you, Mister City Manager. Thank you, Mister Mayor. So, yeah, I had requested this. The only thing I'll say about it is, now that it's been official and requested, the Street Oversight Committee has actually called a special meeting for April the thirtieth, so two days from now. I do plan on attending, and they're going to discuss this resolution, and I think they may be sending something back to us regarding it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else other conversations or discussions on this revolu-- excuse me, resolution regarding the fifty-five million dollar general obligation bond oversight? Any further discussion? Seeing none. The next one would be an ordinance amending Chapter eight, Article six of purchases and sales. Mister City Manager, I may have you just frame this one also, and I think this one is also by Councilmember Stewart, and it is, so please proceed.
We'll do, and pardon me, Mayor, I may just add one last comment on the prior resolution. So pending any, you know, unknown issues, we will plan to have that resolution docketed on the council's May nineteenth agenda unless there's any unforeseen circumstances that come forward. Councilmember Stewart, I will defer to you first in case you would like to frame this a little bit more, but I'm happy to add any additional thoughts you need as well.
Okay, thank you. So I had requested this, and there was some, I believe, some miscommunication between myself and the City Manager originally what I had asked for. So there was actually an amendment to the resolution done this morning that I believe was emailed to all the City Council members, so hopefully you had a chance to look at that. Basically, it changes, instead of just doing a general professional services contracts, it changes it to basically study-type services that would include feasibility studies, strategic planning services, master plans, things like that. It wouldn't include, basically, architect's plans for like streets and bridges, and I think the City Manager also sent an email. This would affect maybe, maybe at the most, like five a year. Would that be correct?
I would say a high-water mark year would be five, but probably more consistency. The type of studies being contemplated for this are less than five, more like two per year.
Okay. So what I'm asking for is for any of those type of situations where they would come up, that regardless of the dollar amount, the City Council would have to do the approval on them. The reason I'm asking for this is pretty simple. Since I've been on the City Council, one of the big things I've heard is we get consultants for all sorts of things. Why do we need all these consultants? In fact, somebody joked with me one time, sometimes you guys get consultants to see if you need a consultant, which obviously I don't believe that's true, you know, it's just, and with the little amount of it, I don't think it would be that big of a deal for us to have to approve them. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else have a further discussion on item number two? Okay, seeing no further discussion, and, oh, please proceed.
Go ahead. There, Councilmember. Okay. So we'd keep the regular approval of the City Manager at a hundred thousand with this is my reading of it. Would that be accurate? I just had one thought, and I don't know what the council's, you know, perspective might be on this, but my thought being relative to issues of purchases out at IPL, you know, with IPL, we tend to be purchasing big, I mean, they're all, it seems like everything at IPL is more expensive, you know, just because that's the nature of what we're buying out there. I just didn't know if we should consider, since we're making a change here, consider a larger amount at, for purchases at IPL than the hundred thousand, let the City Manager approve up to, I don't know, two hundred thousand or something like that for IPL purchases. I just, I don't know what council's thoughts. I just had, as we're sitting here, had that thought, and so I thought I'd raise it since we're providing feedback on this, so that's, I don't know. I don't know what anybody thinks.
Mister Mayor?
Please proceed.
I think that's a reasonable idea as long as it is already accounted for in the budget. If you're having extra-budgetary new items, at least when it's gone through the budget, it's already gone through one set of inspections and approvals, but extra-budgetary items above, so that would be my only concern.
Right. That was my, that was my thought, that we'd already, you know, it would only apply to anything that would be approved to, you know, by, on the budget itself, which I think that's what this already does. Is that correct, Mister City Manager?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anyway, that's my thought.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I was in favor of raising the procurement limit for the City Managers, just to make things more streamlined and moving forward. I don't think we use too many studies as much as we used to. We've had some pretty high-impact studies, which we're been able to work off of and continue moving forward. I'm not in favor of lowering this for the reasons stated in the revised version. I think what the plan that we have here is certainly more than adequate to keep things moving seamless and forward.
Any further discussion on item number two? Seeing none? Very good.
Mister Mayor?
Please proceed.
Is there enough consensus to move this item forward?
That's a great question. How would you like to proceed with that question?
Well, I think the real estate that one council member can move it forward. Is that correct?
Can you repeat that?
I think the real estate that one council, it just takes one council member to move it forward.
That's correct. It doesn't actually take action by the body.
Okay.
Yeah, that's correct. So if, if Councilmember Stewart, if he decides to move it forward, he can still do that.
Once it comes here. Gotcha. Okay.
It just has to, the requirement under your rules is that it is presented to you all and discussed for any feedback, but in the end, any, any member can move it forward.
And it would probably be May nineteenth then would be for those two items?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you. Just as a clarification. Okay. Thank you. Does that help answer your question?
It does, thank you.
You bet. Anyone else? Okay, and that brings us to citizens' requests, and we don't have any, so that'll bring us to presentations, Independence Convention and Visitors Bureau. Mister City Manager, I'll have you cue this one up.
Thank you, sir. The council will recall, several months ago, you took action to establish the Independence Convention and Visitors Bureau. Since that time, staff's worked diligently to begin to stand this organization up. In the not-too-distant future, we will be taking two, or asking the council to take two actions. One, voting on the budget for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six that would provide financial assistance to this entity, and then taking action on a cooperative agreement that would outline roles and responsibilities for both the city and the Visitors Bureau. So to both give you an update on progress to date, and then to sort of set the stage for those two action items that I just mentioned, Assistant City Manager Charlie DeSelle is here this evening to give you that update. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. Mayor's a member of the council, Charlie DeSelle, Assistant City Manager. Quickly, just want to give an update on what our progress has been on this over the past five months. We've continued to work on separating the tourism functions away from the Parks and Rec Department into its own standalone organization. About a month ago, we had a meeting as we began marketing for this new organization. In the meeting, we discussed how other cities really should be envious of the tourism assets that we have here in Independence. I know the council is aware of all of these assets, but they do serve as a good reminder of why this effort is so important. You know, Independence is fortunate enough to be hometown of the thirty-third President of the United States of America, Harry S. Truman. Because of this, we have one of six presidential libraries in the United States. We were the starting point for the Oregon, Californian, and Santa Fe Trails that were used by pioneers and settlers migrating westward, and the National Frontiers Trail Museum showcases this history and had visitors from ten countries and forty-nine states last year. We have other museums that tell the story of our history, such as the Chicago and Alton Railroad Depot, the eighteen-fifty-nine Jail Museum, and the Missouri Modern, excuse me, the Missouri Model Railroad Museum. We are home to many historical assets like the Bingham-Winger Estates and the Vale Mansion. We have several districts where people can spend hours on shopping, dining, and entertainment, like the historic Independence Square and the Inglewood Arts District. Other areas like Fairmount and Maywood are working to re-energize their districts. We are home to the Mid-Continent Library's Midwest Genealogy Center, one of the largest genealogy libraries in the United States. We have an event center that can seat up to seven thousand people for concerts and special events. That arena hosts the KC Mavericks and the Kansas City Comets, who play nearly fifty combined home games each season. Our city limits are less than a mile away from where the Chiefs and Royals host at least ninety games annually. And the most important piece to that conversation is that Independence has over two dozen hotels and nearly two thousand hotel rooms to host guests attending these events. Those guests pay a six-point-five percent transient guest tax that goes towards, this organization is going to really help this organization grow, and one of the reasons we're doing this is because we want to make sure that we're investing those transient guest tax dollars back in to the community and making the effort worthwhile. So don't want to go over too much on the progress to date here. I know this slide was presented at your last meeting, but really what's happened since then, December second of last year, the City Council did adopt a resolution to officially work towards separating the tourism functions away from the city and creating the Independence Convention and Visitors Bureau. Later that month, we did officially submit all the paperwork to form the Independence Convention and Visitor Bureau. Back in early March, we did adopt bylaws for the organization. Those bylaws did spell out that thirteen Board of Directors needed to be appointed to the organization, and later that month, we did officially appoint thirteen Board of Directors to the organization. And just a couple of weeks ago, we had our inaugural meeting of the Convention and Visitors Bureau Board of Directors. So the bylaws do call for thirteen Board of Directors. Really quick, high-level on that, at least one representative should be from an Independence attraction, at least one should be an owner of a business, at least one community leader, at least one representative of a hotel or lodging establishment, and at least one person from the tourism industry. The bylaws also call out that at least four individuals from the City of Independence shall be on that board, including one City Council member, the City Manager, the Director of Finance, and the Director of Parks and Recreation. Those Board of Directors serve three years, three-year terms. The bylaws do spell out that there should be five meetings a month, or, excuse me, five meetings a year in January, March, May, September, and November, but special meetings can be called by the President or two or more directors. Directors shall attend at least seventy-five percent of the meetings, and a vacancy should be filed by recommendation of the City Manager with the affirmative vote of the Board of Directors. So here is the roster for the Board of Directors. You can see how we spread that across all of those areas that we are required to have members within, but when you look at that, I think you see some really key people within the community that are doing some pretty cool stuff when it comes to tourism that are affiliated with this board. I mentioned we had our first Board of Directors meeting, so we were fortunate enough to get a picture of everybody at that meeting, so just to give some context to who those people are. And then looking at the bylaws, there is also an executive committee that is to be appointed. That executive committee will include a President, Vice President, a Secretary and Treasurer, and three, or, excuse me, two at-large members. Those five individuals are elected by the Board of Directors, and the bylaws do stipulate that at least three city representatives should be on that board, with the Secretary and Treasurer always being the director of, or, the Secretary and Treasurer of the organization always being the Independence Director of Finance. Looking at the Executive Director, we actually have, I believe, just posted for this position either today or that's going to be happening tomorrow, so we are now advertising for this position, but that person is going to be hired based on demonstrated professional qualifications with compensation that is set by the Board of Directors. That person's going to run the day-to-day activities of the C V B with authority to hire staff as they see fit and within budget, and they will work with the executive committee and the Board of Directors on adopting an annual budget and an annual marketing plan for the organization. They will report progress in affairs of the C V B to the Board of Directors. They will prepare biannual reports of marketing and promotional activities. Those biannual reports will be submitted to the city, and then they will submit monthly financial statements, and they will have the authority to sign and execute contracts and other written instruments. Looking at the finances of the organization, the Executive Director will be responsible for submitting a budget very similar to how we're doing it here at the city on timeline. The fiscal year will be July one to June thirtieth, just like the city, and there's a lot of other steps along the way that get us to that July first date, and you'll see when we get to the point of the agreement that we're going to have between the city and the C V B, there's going to be a lot of steps built in there, and how the city and the C V B communicate to get that information to our finance department. And then no later than three months after the close of the fiscal year, the C V B will prepare a balance sheet and a statement of application and funds showing the results of the operation of the C V B, and then once that is submitted, an annual report will be given by the C V B to the City Council in the same setting. So looking at our next steps moving forward, now that the Board of Directors are onboard, we want to make sure that we are doing a good job of training them onto what their responsibilities are. We are working, again, I mentioned with that marketing firm called Reactor, to really get the marketing ready and up and running for this organization. We plan on June second at your council meeting to have a contract between the city and the C V B on your agenda. We are starting the search and selection process to hire an Executive Director with a goal to have that person start, hopefully in early July, to start the fiscal year, and then we'll work on onboarding that Executive Director, which will include the creation of job descriptions and assistance in the hiring process of additional staff for the organization. We will create a business plan with that Executive Director and present that to the council, work on creating a website, looking at customer relationship management system, and then our goal is to come back with a update in August to a City Council Study Session. Hopefully by then, we're able to introduce you to the new Executive Director of the organization. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Anyone have any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Mister Mayor. Attracting your first director is going to be probably the most important thing that the organization does, because they're going to set the tone and future of the organization. So can you just give me a sense of where it is we're going to advertise or how we're going to share this opportunity?
Yeah, we've taken a look at quite a few websites, Missouri tourism websites and surrounding states as well, to see what we're able to do. Surprisingly, there's a few states that we've looked at that have rules that if the job's not within the state, you're not able to post on them, so we're dealing with that in particular, but I know we're able to get on Missouri, Kansas, there's a Southeast Tourism Commission, our committee website that we're doing on. Destination America is another website that we're looking at, so our consultant Karen Hibbert's done a really good job of kind of scouring the internet and trying to find those sites on what we can post on. Thankfully, she also has a lot of really good connections within the industry and in this area that she's reached out to to help spread the word.
Thank you. I'm glad you're really looking at that from a thoughtful perspective.
Very good. Anyone else?
Mister Mayor?
Please proceed.
Good question, Councilwoman McCandless. Mister DeSelle, so, I mean, Karen is our consultant, she's been doing work, she's going to be with us as we stand this committee up for, what, probably another three or four months as we're getting things stood up and moving forward for her technical support?
Yep, so our hope was to keep her onboard until we hired the Executive Director and then have her do some onboarding with that individual, and I think when we get to that point where we feel comfortable that we can then hand off the organization to the Executive Director, at that point, then we would see services with her.
Yeah, good. I'm pretty excited. This is something that's been talked about and kicked around for a while, so now we're finally doing it, getting the committee stood up, and I'm kind of excited to see how it goes in the future.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Mister DeSelle, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mister City Manager, this brings us to our annual comprehensive financial report for two thousand and twenty-four, so I'll just have you frame that one, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mister Mayor and members of the council, the city's annual comprehensive financial report was shared a few months ago at the council's Audit and Finance Committee. However, in the recent general obligation bond conversation, we did hear from some who want more information about city finances and certainly want to be responsive to that, so I would like to thank, first of all, first and foremost, our audit firm, and Chester Moyer, who you're going to meet in a minute, for coming to give this presentation a second time to the city. That's rather untraditional, and they were grateful to accommodate that. But Chester is employed with the firm, Ruben Brown. They completed this year's annual financial audit, and he is going to run through the result of their audit, their processes and their findings, and I would just encourage the council at the end of that presentation, any questions you've got specific to this or just audit in general, Mister Moyer is a great resource, and we should take advantage of his presence this evening. So with that, I will turn it over to Mister Moyer.
Thank you, Mister City Manager, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight to go over the results of the audit for the city. So again, my name is Chester Moyer. I'm an audit partner with Ruben Brown. We're independent auditors. We audit about two hundred fifty state and local governments throughout the nation, and this, tonight, we're going to be talking about the results of your June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four financial statement audit, as well as the federal funds audit that was completed and submitted in time, based on the federal government guidelines of March, the end of March, two thousand and twenty-five. So I'll highlight some of the items that I think were most pertinent from the prior presentation that I made, but first of all, the city chooses its accounting policies, and we evaluate those accounting policies to make sure that they're in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and that is part of our audit, and the city did a nice job with the selection of those policies. There are also accounting estimates that are included throughout the financial statements, and we do a lot of work around evaluating those estimates. One of the larger estimates is tied into the health benefits that the city provides around the other post-employment calculation, and actuary, a third-party actuary is hired by the city, and we evaluate the assumptions that the actuary makes and the inputs that the actuary uses to make those calculations in the course of our audit, to make sure that that calculation is reasonable. We also point out to you if there were any corrected or misstatements that were left uncorrected at the conclusion of our audit, and we're pleased to report that there were none. And a few other items that we want to point out is that the Cable Dahmer Arena does roll into the financial statements of the city, and that audit is performed by other auditors, and we do rely on the audit that those other auditors provide for that information. We're pleased to report that we didn't have any consultations outside of our engagement team with any especially complex matters or unusual matters, and that there were no disagreements with the management team here at the city during the course of our audit. The financial statement itself is a large document, and it's a copy is there in Councilmember Perkins right above his, it's about two hundred pages long, and what we're auditing is the basic financial statements. There is information, there's statistical tables, management's discussion and analysis that appears at the beginning of the document. We do not provide an opinion on that information, however, we do read through it and make sure that it's consistent with the information that we did perform the audit on. This audit is also conducted not only under the auditing standards that would be required for private companies, but also under government auditing standards, and that's an extra layer of auditing standards that are required for entities that receive federal funds. That could be a nonprofit organization or a city government, like the City of Independence. So because this audit also falls under government auditing standards, we're required to provide a report on internal controls over the financial statements, and included in that report was one finding we had, and it arose around payroll testing that we performed, so we selected forty individuals randomly, and one of the selections that we made did have an error in it that was subsequently corrected by management, and procedures were then changed to ensure that that didn't happen again. So that's one example of the internal control finding that is a result of the government auditing standards report. We also had another finding that we reported as a result of the federal funds audit that I'll talk about here. It's also referred to as a single audit. Because the city expended over seven hundred fifty thousand dollars of federal funding, we're required to perform a single audit that tests the compliance of that spending as well as the internal controls around that spending, and we tested three sources of funding, if you will, three programs. That accounted for about forty percent of the total federal funds that the city had, and we had, as I mentioned, one finding in that area as well. That was around testing a vendor for a procurement transaction, testing that vendor to make sure that they were not suspended or barred from the federal, doing work with the federal We had three other recommendations, and these are continuations from prior observations that we've had in previous years. These are not considered reportable findings, they're more provided for your context and to give you some perspective about other things that we talk about with management during the course of our audit, things that are kind of a byproduct of our efforts, working through things to try and help improve operations here at the city. So the first one, again, these are going to be at a high level, but to include the capital assets extensively within munis, the munis program that the city uses. The second one is conducting reconciliations more frequently around the utility billing system, and then third, making efforts of including both people and processes to shorten the time of the financial statement close, to lessen that time and to make the audit a little more efficient. So this audit was released on December twentieth, the financial statement audit was, which is in time. The deadline for the city is to issue its financial statements by the end of December, so to the extent we can move that up during December, we're all in favor of doing that. The, as I mentioned, that we did perform the single audit, that's a separate report that you've also been given, but I'm happy to take any questions you have about the results of our audit procedures for the City of Independence for two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Please proceed.
Chester, thank you. First, thanks for being here, and I know that you presented at our Audit and Fininess Committee meeting, and I appreciate you coming back to this venue as well. So just, I think, a couple of questions based on some comments that we've heard in the community and things. So would you consider this a clean audit? I mean, from your perspective?
Yes, that's a great question. So our opinion, I'll start with the technical answer, is an unmodified opinion. The street term would be a clean opinion. So we give a complete clean opinion on the financial statements. That means that we believe the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects. We did have a few findings that we've communicated to you. Those are not considered to be material weaknesses. That would be the most significant form of communication. These are controlled deficiencies, if you will, that we've communicated that are, that management should take corrective action on, but are not going to be, cause a pervasive problem within the city. They should be corrected and addressed, but the city can continue to move on. So to the extent that there are no material weaknesses, I would say that that also lends to the, to the, the term clean. Clean is not a defined term in, you know, what I do, but yes, that's, it's
Understand.
A fair description.
Right, right, okay. And, and you said at the beginning that you do an independent audit. Can you say a little bit more what you mean when you say independent?
Yeah, absolutely. So the, there's two governing bodies that we fall under. One is the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, and they establish a framework for determining independence. And then the second is, again, because you're audited under government auditing standards, the Office of Management and Budget sets out an extensive framework to ensure that governmental auditors are independent of the organizations that they're auditing. Really, if you boil it down, that means that we can only do what we've been engaged to do, and we, even if we've been engaged to do other things, sometimes those things can interfere with giving an opinion on the financial statements of the city. So for example, although our firm has skills and can provide other organizations with advice and around the structure of how you establish accounts in your system and how to set up those functions so that, you know, number A moves to number B, if we're getting in there and meddling with that information, that that information, that would no longer make us independent because we're auditing our own work. So we are independent from the standpoint of, we take the information that's provided to us and we evaluate it and that evaluation is what we return to you. The only thing that's ours in that financial statement is, is the audit report, which is about four pages long. That gives our opinion. Everything else in there is management's effort and, and all we're doing is evaluating, uh, man, management's work. So, and, and we're held accountable to those standards, by the way, by the federal government who does inspect our work at times, as well as our peer review process, which is other accounting firms that come in and every three years evaluate, uh, our firm's collective, um, efforts toward adhering to standards like that.
So from your perspective as an auditor and, and from our perspective as the governing body, we should be, feel, I think, pretty good about this audit. The quality of the audit, the quality of our financial records, the quality of our books, um, and the accuracy of those, given your independent audit and, um, and your review of, of the, our, our records.
Yes, as I, as I stated, we gave, uh, an unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements and, and, uh, we are required to communicate to you if we do see deficiencies that rise to the level of significant or material weaknesses, like I said.
And of course, you didn't do that, so.
Great.
Um, the, the last question I have is, so there's been a, a term kind of bannered around from time to time, um, that, um, by some, some folks asking for a forensic audit of our records. In, in your experience or history, what would a forensic audit be? Is there even such a thing? And, um, and what would, you know, that, you know, entail?
Sure, I could, I could give a, a long lecture on this, I suppose, uh, but I'll try to keep it brief. Kind of like the word clean opinion, you know, that clean opinion doesn't have a defined term, but everybody kind of knows what that means. A forensic audit doesn't actually exist in our framework because an audit has a defined framework of, of what constitutes an audit. So what we call them are forensic accounting services. And forensic accounting services, um, are, are useful, um, when there's litigation. That's probably the most common time that we see forensic accounting services. The, um, the role of a forensic accounting service is, is to find, um, something specific, the nature of which might not be found. And the difficulty around scoping a forensic accounting project is scoping it. And, um, the number of transactions that a city like this processes are quite significant. And how far back would you go in the number of transactions is quite determinative of how expensive it is. There typically for, uh, um, a state or local government, a forensic audit is not, um, typically considered to be a prudent use of resources because the scope can be so hard to define. Alternatively, there are other projects that, that accountants use, such as agreed-upon procedures projects where they might say, okay, we have a particular idea of an area that we'd like you to focus on and, and learn more about and we'd like to structure an engagement specifically around that where we tell you what to look at, meaning, you know, this 12-month period, this number of transactions, and you tell us if anything didn't match what was supposed to be there, to put it more in simple terms. That's different than a forensic accounting project, um, in terms of, of, that would be an agreed-upon procedures project. So, um, forensic accounting does exist. Um, it's very useful in litigation. It's quite costly, um, to do and, uh, the results are often, um, well, they're uncertain frankly for what, you know, what the cost is in order to do those services.
So based on your, you know, independent audit of our records, do you first, do you see any reason for any forensic accounting services needed for, um, in, in our situation?
Again, that would be the judgment of management and you all, of cour-, again, I can't act in the role of management.
Right.
Make those decisions. It's part of being independent. I would say that in my experience, things that have led to forensic audits is when there, um, is a material weakness identified in internal controls. Perhaps there's an extra concern about what else might be going on in that transaction class where that material weakness was identified. Um, that sometimes there is fraud identified and the question of, well, how big is it really? So you can pin down on, we know something happened. Do we know everything that happened related to that? Aside from those two, uh, instances, um, and often insurance companies and, and lawyers and so on are involved in those types of situations. Um, I don't really see forensic accounting services used, um, very often. Again, because they're costly, frankly, for the, for the benefit. You really, you really need to be sure that you know what you're looking for. You have a, a clear objective. Um, and again, in order to scope it properly, because it does take a lot of time to go through transactions at that level of detail.
Okay.
Thank you. Those were my questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Moyer, if for some odd reason you were to find something that wasn't quite right, something that was fraudulent or, or not appropriate, what, what's the mechanism for you to notify the city manager or the team that you're working with to work through that issue?
That's a, that's a great question. Thank you. Um, it depends on what the fraud relates to. So, uh, again, this is all hypothetical.
Sure.
So if there was a fraud in, or suspected fraud within the city manager's office, we wouldn't talk to the city manager. We would talk to, most likely, someone on the Audit and Finance Committee or the, the honorable mayor. Um, so we would go to that person's supervisor, let's say. Um, again, it depends on the scope and the, the, the size of what we might see. We do encounter fraud. This is something that happens. Um, it typically comes from the result of our fraud inquiries that we have with people. So some of you may be familiar with responding to surveys that we send to you about, um, how you feel about the internal control structure and if you're aware, suspicious of any fraud. That's one aspect of, of trying to, trying to throw, cast a net out there to make sure that we're informed of things that, that you might be suspicious or actually aware of. And we talk with people at all levels of an organization, including at the city here. Um, people that are involved with the accounting process and people that aren't involved with the accounting process. So by casting that wide net, we're trying to figure out, is there anything that we should be informed about that's going to impact, uh, the way we conduct our audit? And, uh, again, if there are things that people have concerns about, we go back to them to make sure we have a full understanding of what they feel. And then from there, we might, we, kind of the path forward at that point is, is dependent upon the circumstances, but, uh, it doesn't end up getting closed there. Um, and, and in the most extreme situations, um, when law enforcement is identified, although we have a responsibility to communicate the fraud with you, um, there are provisions within the, the Office of Management and Budget guidelines, basically to say, don't interfere with, interfere with law enforcement. If communicating something to you is going to disrupt an investigation, uh, we're not supposed to do that. So, um, but that's, that's, that's an extreme example of, of what would happen. But typically, our requirement is that you or a representative of you like the mayor would be informed. Again, it's all dependent upon the circumstances.
Sure.
We're not allowed to take it with us, if you will.
Sure. Well, thank you for clarifying that. And for the record, Councilman Fears is the chairman of the Audit Finance Committee and, and Councilwoman Wiley and myself sit on that. So since we're talking about audits and, and finances, there is a petition that's going around and, and I haven't seen it, so I couldn't tell you what the scope or magnitude of what they're asking for our state auditor to come in and, and look at, at the books and stuff here. And for the record, those folks aren't here tonight as we're talking about one of the most important, um, situations in our city and bringing updates here. What, what is the normal process if that was to be transpired, to go to the stated, um, uh, office, to have them come here, the auditor's office, and take a look at us?
Uh, how does it impact us specifically?
Well, how would it impact the city of Independence from your standpoint?
Sure. Well, um, th- this is my opinion.
Sure.
Is that it, it's, it's going to be up to them to decide, are they going to do whatever it is is being asked for? But, um, like any audit, it's going to use resources from the city to respond to the requests of, of whatever auditor it is, whether it's us and they, they respond extensively and, and incur a lot of time responding to our requests. Um, whatever, again, the scope is of, of that audit, perhaps from the, the state would be the same. It would be, um, there would be time involved. There'd be resources of, of both time and money making, you know, reproductions and things of, of documents. Um, it's hard to know, you know, not knowing any specifics again about what
Sure.
may be asked for, but, um, I would just tell you in general that an audit is, is, uh, it's hard. Um, we, uh, we have a lot of requests that we make and we expect them to be done timely, um, in order to meet the objectives of getting the financial statements issued on time. Um, they would have the same expectations, I would expect, so.
Sure.
I don't, I don't know how to be more specific than that.
No, that's really pretty good. I appreciate you coming before the body here in ti-, in its entirety to, to explain what you gave to us, uh, in January. So glad to see none of that information's changed. It's all the same. So thank you for all your hard work and working with our staff.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Anyone else? Miss, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Um, so Councilmember Perkins kind of got my question answered first for me. So I'll, I'll say it a little different way. Um, so you said we had a clean audit. You described it as that. Um, do you norm, do you ever find unclean audits? I mean, I'm assuming you do. I mean, is it a normal thing?
It's, it is, it happens. I would say more frequently you have a situation where you still have, um, an opinion that's where the opinion is unmodified or fairly stated. Um, but there are material weaknesses communicated and those material weaknesses, um, have been corrected by the time that the financial statement is, is being issued. So I would say that's more common, but yes, there are
Okay.
Modif-, modifications of opinions that happen and that can be because of a variety of reasons. The scope, um, there's a scope limitation on, on our part of, we're not able to access documents, for example, or people aren't responding to our inquiries or things aren't matching up that need to match up and those go unresolved and we, we just can't give an opinion on it. We can't say that there's anything there. So.
So does your firm norm, do you do, uh, just municipality audits or do you do, um, private company audits or what, what's the majority of the stuff you do?
Personally, I do state and local governments primarily. Um, and that would include colleges and universities that report under this, this framework. Um, but no, our firm is a full services firm. We do audits of SEC registrants, um, private companies, nonprofit organizations, healthcare organizations. We do.
So if you found an unclean audit on a municipality, you would have no problem coming in and letting the governing body know about it, right?
Absolutely not, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, absolutely not. Yeah, we would not put the integrity of our firm against, against that.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else? Other further questions? Well, Mr. Moyer, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the time and effort and energy you put into this and thank you for coming back again. Uh, great job. So really, really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. City Manager, this brings us to our city, uh, excuse me, semi-annual report on parks commissions. So I'll let you frame that one to help us get started.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, as required, uh, in these various sales taxes that were approved by the voters, the committees, uh, have, um, citizen oversight responsibilities and these committees, uh, submit semi-annual reports. It's been some time since we had, um, public presentations of those, but this body, uh, has asked for resumption of that past practice. Uh, so we're going to have several of these tonight and we'll start with parks, which, uh, Ms. Diane Kaiser is here to walk us through.
Good evening. I'm pleased to have this opportunity to, to explain to you how the park improvement sales tax is being used. Um, let's see, I have to get the PowerPoint going here. Um, so a little bit about the background of the park commission, uh, was created by ordinance of the city in 1999. The mission is to act as an advisor, in an advisory capacity to the city council relating to public education, use and knowledge regarding parks and recreation activities. Uh, the commission also serves as the official Parks and Recreation Sales Tax Oversight Committee. So that's what we're talking about this evening. Here's kind of a broad sense of what has happened during the first, um, six months of this fiscal year. Uh, the current park sales tax was renewed in perpetuity in August of 2010. It's, uh, was estimated to generate about $5.1 million for the fiscal years and the money is dedicated to ongoing park maintenance, certain facility operations, recreation program and parks and recreation related capital projects. Through December 31st, uh, the, the tax had generated almost 49, or 49%, almost half of what it was expected to generate for the park commission use. Um, so in a broad sense, these are some of the things that have been done and we'll get a little bit more specific as we go along here. So the athle-, athletic fields are prepared each year for the various sports, baseball, softball, soccer. Uh, the parks, the bathrooms have been, uh, painted and graffiti and vandalism, which is a frustrating part of the job, uh, has been taken care of. Brush along the trails has been cleared and, uh, we also clear brush along the I-70 Cable Dahmer Arena. Uh, Waterfall Park, there were some pipes that were cleaned out and, and a memorial bench was installed at the Santa Fe Park. Uh, the pavilion roof was, was replaced and at Dickinson Park, the, the fence was removed and replaced. Uh, the, the bathrooms have also been winterized. There were a couple of snow removal events and 27 homeless camps were cleared out. This is kind of a, of a broad list of the various programs that the parks, uh, department does. So arts and culture, and if you have a report that was repaired in February, I think it, the packet was actually sent to you. If you look down through the list, you can see much more specifically the types of programs that are offered in each of these various areas. So arts and culture, uh, we have lots of theater programs. If you haven't been out to, uh, George Owens Park to see the chess program that's there on Thursday afternoons, I would commend that to you. That's really kind of a, a fun thing to, to watch and, um, to observe. Let's see, oh, there we are. Uh, aquatics programs, the nature programs. There's even a program to teach you how to grow gourmet mushrooms. Um, so lots of gardening, bird watching, nature trails, those kinds of things. Um, the special events, the, the Christmas craft show that's at, um, Sermon Center, um, sports programs and then wellness programs. Over 2,000 people participated, the wellness programs that occur at Sermon Center. Uh, so a broad list of all various activities that go on. And as I say, more specific information is in the report that you received. So we're grateful to the citizens of the commu-, community and providing this resource to us. And let me just close with the last statement that was in this longer report. Um, in the opinion of the Parks Recreation Staff and Commissioners, uh, the activities, initiatives and projects supported by the Parks Improvement Sales Tax are in keeping with the program's intent and that the work of the Parks Recreation Department continues to enhance the quality of life in Independence. So I think we're doing, we're doing what needs to be done. If you have any questions, Morris Heidi is here. I'm sure she'd be glad to, to answer those questions.
That was very well done. That was very well done. Uh, any questions or comments from the councilmembers for, uh, Mr. Heidi?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Um, this is just going to be a blanket statement for all the citizens who volunteer on these committees. Thank you so much for your service to Independence. These committees matter. It's, it's, you know, it's a, it's a lot of time and we really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Other comments, questions, concerns? Mr. Heidi, enjoy. Uh, very, very good. All right. That brings us to the semi-annual report on independent tourism. Mr. City Manager, do you have any, anyone to frame that at all or?
Just in the same spirit, Mayor, continuing with those reports. And, uh, Mr. Sam Rocher from the Tourism Commission is here to give this presentation.
Perfect. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Thank you for this opportunity to, uh, give the, uh, transient guest tax program, uh, report for the bi-annual period ending December 31st of, uh, 2024. Hopefully I can operate the slides correctly here. Okay. And I'll just read some of the, the highlights here. You can of course refer to, to the slides, but, uh, this, the Tourism Commission, yeah, as it presently exists, uh, serves as an advocate for the tourism industry in Independence by educating residents and businesses of the economic, cultural and historic value of tourism in Independence. Promoting co-op, promoting cooperation and communication among tourism sites and addressing issues that affect tourism. The commission advises and recommends policies, procedures and programs that benefit tourism in Independence by helping to support the tourism division objectives and provide regular feedback, uh, to the Parks Recreation Tourism Division objectives and provide regular feedback to the Parks Recreation and Tourism A quick overview here of the transient guest tax, again, for that six-month period that ended in December. Again, I'm just going to hit through the highlights here. It was estimated to generate approximately $2.3 million for fiscal year '24, '25. Those are the latest figures we have available. That's bullet point number three there, bullet point number four. We were dedicated to supporting the promotion, operation, and development of tourism-related activities, and they, and this is important. They can only be used for that purpose. A couple highlights here of the Visitor Services and Promotions Report, otherwise known as the STAR reports, an acronym for the Smith Travel Accommodations Report, or STAR, which is a kind of industry-wide standard of hotels and how they compare across the industry and in our region. And a couple of the highlights there of the STAR reports there comparing '24 and 2024 and 2025. You'll see a slight downturn in, in the occupancy percentage in those first two columns from 24 to 25. Again, this is for the latest information we have, the quarter ending, the second quarter of December 2024. So we do see a slight decline in the, in the occupancy percentage. And you can also look at the average daily rates, which are very comparable in '24 and 2025, and the, the revenue for available room as well. Those are key indicators of, that are measured in these STAR reports for the, for the two dozen or so hotels that we have in, in the area. And then in terms of the attraction historic site attendance for, for that same period, again, you can feel free to refer to these stats. And just to pick up a couple of the highlights there, the Bingham Wagner Estate did see a decline between 2024 and 2025. Again, first quarter and second quarter of 2025. But we see an increase in the first quarter figures for Chicago and Alton Depot, and a slight decline in the second quarter. The Vale was, was up in first quarter of 2025, but then down again in the second quarter and, but the amount of promotional items distributed were up in, in that same period of time. So again, those are just some of the highlights. The National Frontier Trails Museum, you can refer to, to the information there. I think the visitation you could describe as robust, but not, not up to pre-pandemic levels in, in my view. The museum is open there, by the way, Monday to Saturday, 10 to 6, and close Sundays. I'm impressed by the number of international visitors, though, that we've had, we had in, in the, the end of the, the year. A lot of programming and a lot of school groups and students that came through. I think it's really, really a positive thing. Hope we can keep that going. And then, of course, the Missouri Model Railroad Museum. As I know with my day job at the Truman Library, everybody wants to know what's new. And that generates interest, keeps people coming and coming back, and always wanting to, to see what's, what's new. And of course, the Missouri Model Railroad Museum is one of our newest attractions in the city, opened in the May of last year, May of 2024. And you can see some of the, the highlights there. And I think it's a very exciting place, and again, it's generated a lot of interest in, in the area to answer that age-old question, what's new? And in terms of historic sites, a few highlights of what's going on there. The Bingham Wagner Estate stabilized the roof, soffit and fascia replaced. The Vale Mansion, the south porch was restored, which is badly needed. And I know the window repair is done as well. The Truman Depot restoration continues with a target completion date of June 30, although that's kind of a moving target, and we've discussed over in recent years, in part due to matters that are beyond our control with the pandemic. And I know with the Truman Library, our reopening after the extensive renovation was also delayed due to unforeseen circumstances. So we're, we're excited to have that, have that reopen. So we do look forward to the completion date of the Truman Depot, which maybe June 30th is less than a move, less than a moving target now. And then the Missouri Pacific Caboose was relocated to the Missouri Model Railroad Museum and, and the CNA Depot location for its restoration. So it's good not to lose that, that resource. I'd be glad to entertain any questions or refer them to Morris, as our previous speaker said. So if you have any questions.
Very good. Anyone else? Any questions? Please proceed.
Yeah. Thank you so much for, for the report. My was, my comments were more of a tie-in to our transient guest tax and also with our convention bureau that we are looking at here, how we can really enhance that visitor experience and advertise to get folks here and advertise the historic sites and the other opportunities that we have here. So I'm looking forward to having those numbers increased so we can do more projects and have more bang for the buck. So thank you for helping us oversee this.
Yeah, we're, we're looking forward to that opportunity, too.
Anyone else? Are there further questions? Please proceed.
Mr. Rocha, just appreciate your work with the Truman Library, and then on top of that, and you're willing to serve on a board or, or commission. I have to second Councilmember Wiley's thanks. You guys do this as a labor of love because we know exactly how much you get paid, which is nothing. And so you help the city go. So appreciate that, and that you love our historic spaces because we love them too, and need the wisdom of the people on that commission and the wise application of funds to help preserve those. So thank you.
Yes. Oh, you're welcome. You're welcome. I see it as a rising tide lifts all boats. And so what benefits the Truman Library, it benefits the city and vice versa.
Anyone else? Other comments? Well, Mr. Rocha, when I was at the Truman Library and you gave a tour, it was fantastic. So if anyone ever gets a chance to see you give a tour of the Truman Library, it's excellent. So highly, highly recommend it.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm happy to do that for anyone here present. So thank you.
Anyone else? Other comments? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. City Manager, the next one is a semi-annual report on the Stormwater Oversight Committee, if I'm correct.
Yes, sir. And we'll ask Les Boatright to come forward and give that presentation, and I'm not sure he'll be able to refer questions to Morris.
I was going to try. Everybody else did. Okay, let me get out of this presentation. Okay, very good. I was kind of hoping, looking at the weather forecast, by the way, I'm Les Boatright, on the Stormwater Committee, with the weather forecast, it was supposed to rain tonight, and I thought, what a better time to talk about stormwater than during a rain event. But if you go outside, it's not raining. So we're going to talk about it anyway. I am here to give the Stormwater Committee Oversight Report. There's a lot of good work going on. The folks that get down to the trenches literally to do this work, my hats are off to them. Projected revenues for '24 through '25, you can see on here, it's almost $5.66 million, broken down by the sales tax, use tax, and then interest on that money. And every penny of it gets spent. But when you go back to the beginning of the sales tax, the only money that came from storm, for stormwater from the city coffers were in the general budget. It was about $312,000. And that wouldn't even be a drop in the bucket, pardon the pun. I had to say that. I'm sorry. Morris told me to. I don't know who Morris is, but we're going to have a talk. Actual revenues for '24 through '25, and this is really just the first six months of the year, sales tax is collected $2.5 million, interest earned for a total of about $2.7 million. So the interest, we've been doing very well on that interest earned on that money, which is great. Having these funds, and I'll talk about that here in a minute, has allowed us to apply for some grants for matching funds that we couldn't have done without this. Allocation of funding for '24 through '25, about 3.3 for maintenance, administration, and permit compliance. When this first started, we started getting this tax, the permitting fees just went through the roof. It was like a million dollars a year. And when we were only getting $312,000, it wouldn't even pay for the permitting that was required. So we have the money now to do it. Total operating expenditures of just under $4 million. Capital budget, and that includes some grant funding that I'll talk about here in a minute, for total expenditures of about $17 million. The ARPA Grant Funding Award, the American Rescue Plan Act, you can see here in these columns, I'll take the first one, and you can read the others. Raymond Harkless to Mills, and we've got pictures on that in a minute. The total project cost was about $1.2 million. ARPA grant funds paid just under a million of that, and the city share was $240,000. So for about 20 cents on the dollar or so, we were able to get that project funded because we had the matching funds to use. And you can see the others, that I won't go through the numbers, but I think you have the detail. Maintenance summary. Now, the left column that says fiscal year '23 through '24, that's a whole year. The right column fiscal year '24 through '25 is just the first six months of that fiscal year. So the numbers are a little bit askew. It's really not apples-to-apples, but you kind of get the gist. For conduit work repairs, for example, the whole of last year in '23, '24, we only did 60. So far, in the first six months of this new year, we've done 73. So some of the numbers have increased, some are about where you would expect them to be. But there is a lot of work done, that has been done that needs to be done. Capital improvement project summaries, one of the projects that's under construction, we've got the corrugated metal pipe or CMP culverts all over town. It's all failing. It's all being replaced. And so as they get to these big ones, as you can see there, that gentleman's standing on top of how big that corrugated metal pipe is. But there's a 2018, 2817 trenchered conduits done, Bunchy Road Culvert, and there was so much on Facebook about that whole area. It's, it's completed. I haven't heard anybody say thanks afterwards, but they really had ideas about it while it was being done. Lexington and Nolan Road Rock Culvert is completed, and Saddle Brook Outlet Scour they're working on now. So quite a few very large projects getting done. Another one here I mentioned earlier, Raymond Harkless to Mills, Spring Ranch, it's in the Spring Ranch watershed. 80% of the, of the money was funded by ARPA grant, as I mentioned in that diagram earlier. They're about 80% complete. And you can see these aren't small things they're building. You can see that lower right-hand picture that's got the five gentlemen standing on it. You know, they're not locking, looking for a lost contact. They're up there pouring concrete and getting the, the structure needed to complete that project. Rock Creek watershed, corrugated metal pipe, 80% funded again by ARPA. Phase one is about 60% complete, and phase two just got underway. So there's a lot of work being done in a lot of areas of town, and they're, like I said, large projects, so it takes a lot, a long time to get them done. Well, I found this an interesting statistic. We did this sales tax back in '99. Several citizens got together and had gotten tired of being flooded out. And that's how this whole came to be, the, the stormwater tax. So far, we've raised $48.8 million in the life of this tax. I said, when we get to 50 million, we need to do something to celebrate. Because when you only had $312,000 a year, over that same period, we've been able to, to touch any of this that we've done. They've got over $13 million is dedicated to capital improvement projects currently underway. $10.5 million from the Missouri ARPA funds. 110 construction projects have been completed, 13 watersheds, five projects in design, and seven projects in acquisition or construction phase. There is a lot of stuff going on. When this tax first got passed, they said, give us a list of projects you're going to do right away. And they were like, there's so many, how do you pick? You know, parks, when they did that, they, they had a pretty much running list. Stormwater was just a little bit different to try to pull that together, you know, what, what could you, the low-hanging fruit, so to speak, what could you make the biggest impact with? So in the city of Independence, we have over 13,800 storm structures, 2,300 miles of pipe. There's regional detention basins throughout the town, and 23 local watersheds. Lot of stuff to cover. My hats are off to all the crews in, in, in water maintenance. I know they changed their name. I'm not sure. That, was that close? All right. Thanks, Morris. That's my Morris. But I'm here for any questions that you have on this information. There's a lot here, but come to one of our meetings sometime. I think you'll learn a lot.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Other questions? Please proceed.
So nobody likes to talk about stormwater. It's sort of that underground thing.
It's underground, out of sight, out of mind.
And you only think about it when it explodes, or when you've got a whole street full of water and goo.
When something plugs up.
I, I have to just give a tip of the hat to the thoughtful, strategic, methodical planning that goes into replacing sort of the ugly stepchild of infrastructure. And I know that you're never going to get big thank you notes from the people whose basements didn't flood and whose streets didn't wash away. But on behalf of all the people who get to go home tonight and sit and listen to the wonderful rain and not have to worry that bad things are happening, appreciation to your committee, appreciation to municipal services. Thank you for thinking ahead so that we don't have to have to clean up behind. So thank you very much.
Yeah, it's, it used to be they knew what sites they had to go out when it rained, just to stand there and watch it fill up and flood. They don't have to worry about that as much now. They have a few key points, but it's not as dire need as what it was. All right?
Very good. Anyone else? And I've got to also say on the report, just tremendous number statistics. Even the statistics here on the summary page is pretty remarkable. The 13,800 storm structures, 230, excuse me, 230 miles of pipe, 19 regional detention basins, which is very important because the floods we had, I believe it was in the early 80s. Those detention basins are very important in making sure that people's basements don't flood, which back then, a lot of people's basement did flood because detention basins didn't exist. And then the water, the local watersheds and the, the subsheds that you have. So you have to look over a lot of stuff, and you, you've learned more about water management than you probably ever thought.
Well, yeah. Dick Champion, who started this whole project, always used to school us on the cloaca maxima. And if you don't know what that is, look it up. But it is a Greek sewer that's still in existence today. And he always wanted to build his own cloaca maxima here in Independence so we never had to worry about the sewers not working. So that, that was kind of our mentor. You know, one of the things when they first did the stormwater, they started ripping into some facilities to fix them, they found a wooden drop box to collect stormwater that was stamped 1852-ish, that was still working just fine. But they took it out to, to improve it with corrugated metal pipe. And now what are we doing? We're replacing the corrugated metal pipe. If we'd have left that one alone, who knows? But yeah, it was interesting to find, to see how our forefathers and stuff addressed this issue with, with wood, and it seemed to hold up. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Mr. City Manager, this brings us to Streets Improvements Oversight Committee. And we had some discussion about that earlier, but, and I can see Wes Epperson approaching, so.
Yep. We're pleased to have Wes, and here he comes.
Very good. I didn't mean to steal your thunder there, Mr. City Manager.
My name is Wes, Wes Epperson. I'm the chairman of the Street Improvements Oversight Committee. And the other members that serve with me are Dennis Tharp, Labette O'Hada, Marcy Gregg, John Powell, and Stacy Anderson. And we do have a vacancy. A little bit of background. City Street Sales Tax was begun in 1998. After several voter-approved extensions, the half-cent sales tax was made permanent by the voters on August the 8th, 2017. Voters approved the No Sunset Street Sales Tax Ordinance, questioned with over 80% approval. Ordinance 18748 took effect on January 1st, 2020. Section 5 of that ordinance requires an Oversight Committee designated and appointed by members of the city council to monitor the expenditures from the transportation sales tax and make periodic reports to the city council. I will get to the presentation here. Okay, I've done those. Okay, I've covered that. Those are the revenue reports from the Street Sales Tax from July 1st to December 17. Those are the revenue reports from the street sales tax from July first to December thirty-first, six months. The sales tax revenue is ten million one hundred and twelve thousand dollars. That's the budget. The actual collected so far is four million nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand two hundred and ninety-eight dollars. We've collected four hundred and nineteen thousand one hundred and sixty dollars in interest income, which is above budget. And other revenues were two million six hundred and seventy-one thousand and sixty-eight dollars. So we're at, the total budgeted amount for twenty-five was eleven million two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. We stand now at, at the end of December, at eight thousand, or eight million forty-eight thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars. The street operations summary. Street sweeping for fiscal year twenty-five. That's three quarters of this reported. Street sweeping has completed eleven hundred and forty-six lane miles. The collection has been three hundred and three point eighty-three cubic yards. R O W illegal dumping, eight hundred and twenty-seven cubic yards have been collected. Traffic signs repaired, thirteen hundred and twenty-seven. Potholes repaired, seventy-three hundred and four. Snow operations. Employee hours were ten thousand and nine hours. Snow operation treatments, three thousand one hundred and twenty-three tons of salt and forty thousand seven hundred and fifty gallons of brine. Partial and full-depth street patching is fifty-five hundred yards. Right now, under construction, the pavement preventative maintenance program is entering its fourth year of alternate maintenance programming. It's funded by current budget street sales tax. It uses a blended approach of seals, micro-surfacing, crack, fog, scrub, and cape seals. Previous years completed since adopting blended approach, two hundred and forty-three point eight one lane miles. Last three physical years of the program average were eighty-six point eight nine lane miles. Crack filling, eighteen point zero nine lane miles. Roadway seals, thirty-eight point nine one lane miles. And the overlay is twenty-nine point eight nine lane miles. Current fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-five program, fifty-six point nine five lane miles. Two thousand twenty-five crack filling, five point eighteen lane miles planned. Twenty-twenty-five overlay is eighteen point fourteen lane miles planned. And twenty-twenty-five pavement seals is thirty-three point six three lane miles planned. Twenty-four highway complete streets, phase two. Design consultant is Burns and McDonald. Construction start date was summer of twenty-three. Administered by MoDOT. Project completion date, winter of twenty-twenty-four. This was a MoDOT cost-share project. It covered Sterling Avenue to River Boulevard. That included new sidewalks, curb and gutter, and pavement. Plus ten-foot multi-use path, south side and five-foot sidewalk on the north side. Storm sewers and traffic signal improvements. Estimated total project cost, six million five hundred and sixty-one thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars. Okay. Phase one. Construction start date, March twenty-twenty-five. Project completion date, early two thousand twenty-six. This was a fully funded federal grant project, including sidewalk, curb and gutter, pavement, storm sewer, electrical, lighting, landscaping, and hardscaping improvements. Also, a bike lane along Main and Lexington. New traffic pattern and parking layout. Estimated total project cost, three million seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand and four hundred and ninety-seven dollars. And we can all see that work ongoing right now. Truman Depot and Pacific Trail Improvement. Construction contract awarded, one million four hundred and forty-seven thousand five hundred and ninety dollars. Construction began spring of twenty-three. Estimated substantial completion, summer of twenty-five. This was a cost share with Parks, Recreation, and the Tourism Department. Building restoration improvement for the historic Amtrak station, six hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-one thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Street improvement provides complete street upgrades on the north side of West Pacific Avenue to South Pleasant Street. The street sales tax part was eight hundred and twenty-six thousand three hundred and sixty-two dollars. This included new curb and ADA compliance sidewalk, pavement marking and signage for shared-use lanes for bicycle users. Tap funds of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Total estimated project cost, one million six hundred and seventy-two thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. The Little Blue Parkway and Jackson Drive intersection improvements. Construction contract awarded, one million fifty thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Construction began spring of twenty-five. Estimated substantial completion, fall of twenty-five. Eligible for reimbursement, governor's cost-share grant, and a North Point reimbursement. It includes new curb and ADA compliance sidewalk, improved signalization, median removal and lane additions. Total estimated project cost is, I've already stated, a million fifty thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Future capital improvement projects, thirty-one million nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-one dollars budgeted for upcoming projects. Approximately forty-nine point seven million in expected grant reimbursement. Seventeen projects are in design phase. Those projects in design phase include the Vale Sidewalks Phase Two, Twenty-Third Street Mobility and Safety Improvement Project, Truman Connected Phase One and Two, Twenty-Third Street Complete Streets Phase One, Two, and Three, Twenty-four Highway Complete Streets Phase Three, Nolan Road Multimodal Corridor, the Historic Trails Phase One, Fairmount Loop Trail, Winter Road Complete Streets, Sidewalks Program, Crissler Avenue Bridge redeck, the Heidelberger Bridge, the Inglewood Traffic Circle and Winter Road Streetscape, and the East Kentucky Road Bridge over Mill Creek. So, a lot of work going on and a lot of work planned. We also had an additional memo, which you should have a copy of. And this is to the city council from the Street Improvement Oversight Committee. This came from our April third, twenty-twenty-five meeting. Street sales tax operating expenses. At the committee meeting on April third, twenty-twenty-five, a motion was passed to submit a memo from the committee to the city council stating the following. Some members of the Street Improvement Oversight Committee have expressed concern for the manner in which operating expenses are calculated as they relate to compliance with Section Six of the Sales Tax Enabling Ordinance, Ordinance one eighty-seven forty-eight. The city council should ensure it is satisfied that the requirements of Section Six are being met. And I would answer questions if you have any. By the way, these other two items, this was our annual street sales tax fund summary for the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. And this was a sheet that was passed out at the meeting by Lisa Reynolds, the Director of Municipal Services.
Thank you, Mr. Epperson. Anyone else, other questions?
I have a question.
Please proceed.
The, first of all, thank you for your working on the committee and doing the update. As I was refueling some of the information here, the legal opinion from Mr. Culver, is that the response to your letter?
Yes. Well, we've kicked this disagreement around for a while. And by the way, I want to add, we have a good working relationship with Director Reynolds and her staff. She has a really great staff, really great crew. And I want to brag, I don't want to miss out on mentioning our liaison, Chuck Harvey. Guy's great. We put him through the wringer, I think, sometimes before our meetings. But anyway, councilman, we've kicked this question around for a while. On the, the Section Six specifically talks in the Street Sales Tax Ordinance that there would be no more than eight percent of annual revenues from the street sales tax will be expended for operating expenses. And I guess the difference that we have, that we feel the city council needs to weigh in on, is how is that, that Section Six implemented? Some of us on the committee believe that operating expenses should also include salaries and benefits and any pension payments that are coming out of the street sales tax. Respectfully, Attorney Culver has a different opinion. And there's some on our committee that we have a difference. And so we would like to turn this over to the city council and let you guys give us a ruling one way or the other, and then we can move on.
Sure. Well, I greatly appreciate that. Perhaps this could be, and I think the Audit Finance Committee could review. I know I've had the pleasure speaking with our, well, before, well, no, you were the Assistant City Manager. We have talked a little bit about this and have read this review some months ago.
Yeah.
So I'm pretty comfortable with what the city has standard, has stated here, and also with our legal opinion. But we can certainly review it at our Audit Finance Committee meeting, for sure.
We, I would say that we have, we, you know, we've, we've worked, well, we've tried to work with the finance department. We've never actually had a, any kind of a face-to-face meeting with anybody from finance. And we, in the past, have submitted questions. They wanted us to submit written questions to the finance department on these, I don't know, eight or nine questions that, that we had, that we wanted answered. We didn't get a response for six months. And then some of those responses were just kicking it back to the liaison to go back to the finance department. It just don't work very well when you, you have an annual financial statement that is, doesn't give a whole lot of detail. And when you have more questions that you would like to ask about, you know, the street sales tax finances, waiting another six months and then having to submit it back through the liaison until you have another quarterly meeting, it just hasn't worked very well.
Sure. And we definitely understand that, but for the record, there has been a legal opinion given to the committee.
Yes.
But we will also review it and get back with you just as soon as we can.
Right. And whatever's decided, we'll respectfully abide by that ruling.
Well, thank you.
Whatever decision you guys make. We just, we need to get it settled.
Sure. We'll get a result for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any else?
Thank you. A couple of questions. The first is, you know, when we look at overlay, it looks like the dollars that we're able to, excuse me, the number of lane miles that we can do for overlay is decreasing. And I know that might be confusing for people watching this, but the cost of paving those lane miles has just gone up astronomically. So the same amount of money, we're able to do less work because it is so much more expensive. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes.
Okay.
And we were well-informed by the municipal service department when they had made that decision, that the overlay was just, is, you know, by the time they got completely through, then the, some of the roads that they started with would be really deteriorated. So we all agreed that the program that Lisa put together, her and her staff, we agreed with that.
So we're doing some treatments that aren't full overlay, but they're preserving the durability of that road for a longer period of time so we can stretch it out in between. Is that, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, and they've done their pavement condition index. I think they've covered every lane mile in the city, so they know which, how to handle, you know, the different problems with pavement around the city. No, we're well, we're well satisfied with the work they're doing, the reports they give, the staff. the work they're doing, the reports they give, the staff. Lisa brings her whole crew in sometimes. And there's more of them than there is of our committee members sometimes. But we just have this one hang-up. And we'd like to get it settled, and then we'll move on.
So, in that consideration, I know one of the things that, when you're thinking about paying for operations, you're not just paying for them to do the studies and administer and deal with the contracts, which are all important parts of getting street projects done because we don't own the surfacing. That's primarily done through outsourcing. But one of the things they're doing is using their expertise to leverage grant dollars and partnership opportunities. So, I really look at the number of dollars we've actually been able to put to streets, so much more than our sales tax ever could have covered. So, just a great deal of gratitude to Municipal Services for finding money in many, many places. So, I appreciate the amount of leverage that the operational dollars are bringing to be able to bring those dollars in. So, I hope that's something else that Audit and Finance will consider in your evaluation. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please proceed.
Wes, like everybody else, thank you for your work on this and your committee, and also the other committees that are presented tonight. I just have one real question, or one comment. And that is that we will, we have, our next Audit and Finance Committee meeting is June 4th. And so, we'll bring this up at that time and talk about it. And then, the other question I really have is, you probably heard earlier this evening that there was a proposed resolution that we add to your committee's work relative to the GEO bond work. And I just want to, since you're here, ask, do you have any concerns about doing that? Does that sound okay? I just want to, you know, I think before I vote on that, I'd like to know what your thoughts are.
Well, I can only speak for myself. I can't speak for the committee because we're going to have a meeting on the 30th where we'll discuss it and then let the committee decide if this is okay with them. But I have no problem with it. I have mentioned to the Mayor that, and Councilman Stewart, that with this additional responsibility and I think just the popularity of street improvements and independents. I mean, this sales tax originally, it got passed by over eighty percent. That made it permanent in 2017. And of the three GEO bond questions, the bridge and streets GEO bond passed with sixty percent. So, I would respectfully ask that you, the council, consider recording the Street Improvement Oversight Committee meetings. That would be one thing I would request moving forward. But as far as taking on the oversight of the bond money, I don't have a problem with that. But I just think we ought to open it up so the public can see these meetings.
Appreciate that. All right. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Yeah, so I just wanted to talk about what Councilor Fears just mentioned. So, yeah, I've spoken with Mr. Epperson about this. And if his committee decides on Wednesday that they don't want to do this, I plan on pulling that resolution, not moving it forward. And, but if they do decide they want to do it, I'm going to sponsor a resolution to have their meetings recorded. So, just FYI, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Mr. Epperson, thank you very much.
Okay.
And also, seeing the hour is 7:36, how about we take a five-minute break before we go on to the Public Safety Tax Oversight? We start and get it started here. So, the next topic is Public Safety Tax Oversight Committee Report for the spring of 2025. Mr. City Manager, anything you want to frame it with or get it started?
Pat Casey here to give this presentation.
And he's got extensive background in municipal services and municipal government, so...
We'll try it.
You can do it, I know you can.
Mr. Mayor and Councilman, thanks for being here. My name's Patrick Casey. The regular chairman couldn't make it tonight, Mr. Mudd, so he says things roll downhill, so I'm going to make it. But I do want to recognize the people that's on our committee because they do a very good job. Mr. Bruce Frakes, Bruce Ludeman, Donna Pittman, Aaron Boatwright, myself, and Tara Cruz. This program oversees monitored use of the tax devoted to public safety. The expenditures of the public tax are reviewed by the Public Safety Sales Tax Oversight Committee each quarter. Represents, reports, and reviews are provided and guidance given to ensure that public funds are spent in physically sound manner following the guidance of the ballot language, the city charter, city policies, and the state statutory requirements. This runs for the first physical year for the Independence Fire Department. Their fire department will continue to work towards the objectives and setting the standard that cover of the community risk assessment, master plan of the fire department. This will include the station locations, future stations, needs, staffing, and other considerations in the department. Update their capital outlay five-year plan to account tax changes, creation, organization, and physical budget for sales tax to stay in compliance with the dollars or better tracked by differing requirements. Bring our staffing levels up to meet full staffing existing requirement and apparatus. Begin construction of Station Eight, Station Five, and Station Eleven as well-determined locations for future replacement, new station needs. This could include property acquisitions, environmental studies, and beginning design. Continue to evaluate staffing apparatus, locations to handle increased volume, service, and needs and administrative functions. Some of the major updates on this is on unpaid encumbrances. The first one really will be in a completed major project because that pumper is at Station Four right now, and it was delivered about a month ago. But we still have two pumpers ordered for the fall of '25. One pumper ordered for October of '26. And the station designs, conceptual drawings for Eight, which is going to be the training and the storage, and then Station Five and Eleven. Some of their completed major projects, again, as I said, Station One has a pumper, Station Four has a pumper. Their aerial platform is in service as of now. Station One, their west side parking lot construction they're still working on. Turnout gear is an ongoing project. They just have to keep purchasing this as folks come on. Hire personnel based off a master plan. And that's also the same thing as their projects in progress. For their first physical year, they started the physical year at eleven million, nine hundred and seventy thousand. They had an estimated budget revenue sales tax for eleven million, one. Estimated waterfall use tax for eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand. And they've collected through January of '25, six million, nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. And they have an unassigned fund balance of, as of January 31st, a little over fourteen million dollars. And this also helps offset six chief officers and seventeen firefighters. The Independence Police Department, we've inherited a couple more tax reports. We do the Public Safety Sales Tax Report, the Use Tax Proposition P Report, the Marijuana Tax Report, and then the Prop P D Tax Report. As far as the Public Safety Sales Tax, again, it's the beginning of the physical year for the first six months, seven months. Their beginning balance was two million, one hundred thousand. And they've collected through February of '28 or '25, two million, a little over two million dollars. Their total expenditures is two million, six. Total transfers out are three hundred and five thousand. Cancel prior year encumbrances was one point three million. And their ending fund balance as of February 28th, 2025, was two point five million. Original sales tax projected at that time was two point nine. Some of their accomplishments are, expenditures are devoted in three main purposes. Significant purposes to date is the annual New World Software Maintenance, fifteen Motorola handheld radios, thirty-two desktop computers, and twelve monitors replaced, fifty-five mobile data terminals purchased, nine 2025 Ford Explorers with emergency equipment, thirty mobile in-car radios, forty sets of stop sticks in year two of the ten-year Axion contract for body cameras, in-camera tasers, and VR training and records management. Their transfer out was made to owners representing the Service Justice for the, on the Justice Center report. The Prop P Report, beginning balance at the 2024 was four point nine million. Total collected through February of this year was four point eight. Expenditures was four point five million. Total transfers was four hundred and thirty-four thousand. And they canceled the encumbrances of thirteen thousand. So, that left them an ending balance of February 28th of four million, eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-two. Prop Z was designated to hire and equip additional police officers in dependence. As of this time, all thirty-two positions are currently filled. And the transfers out reflect payments to Hoffer Welker to date on the Justice Center project. The Independence, also, they handle the marijuana tax, this again till February 28th of 2025. Starting balance was two hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Through February, they've collected six hundred and fifty-two thousand. The community development expenditures was a hundred and two. And the ending balance was nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-six. People are using their marijuana, I hate to say that, but they are. The Prop P D Tax Information, beginning balance was zero as it just started. And they've collected through February, a hundred and forty-seven thousand. And their total expenditures was fourteen thousand. This was hiring incentives paid to date to keep the personnel they have. Ending balance was a hundred and thirty-three thousand, three forty-nine. This mechanism is funding for the wage scale to force more police officers and make independents more competitive for the hiring market and keep the men and women we have here already at this time. If you have any questions, Chief Dustman and Chief Walker would be more than happy to answer.
Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions? Please.
Patrick, could you go back to your second slide?
Second?
Yeah, I think. Keep going, I'm sorry, probably number three, somewhere in there where you talked about two point five million, but two point nine was projected.
That'd be it on the police side?
Yeah, keep going. Yeah, right there.
Right here?
Yeah, so, was the original sales tax projection two point nine, and we have only collected two point five? Is that a timing variance, or it just didn't generate that much?
The projection was two point nine, and we've only collected...
Two point five, any years' time?
Two million and fifty-one thousand.
Okay, so, that's not a half years, that's the full years, the two point five? And you were projecting two point nine? Is it underperforming?
I knew we'd get somebody on the meeting.
Yeah, I'd have to look at the financials. I don't remember what the full budgeted amount was, but this is only through February 28th.
Okay, perfect, that's all I needed. It was in a complete year. Thank you very much.
Very much.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else, other questions? Please proceed.
Mr. Casey, thank you very much. My next question is for Mr. Walker. Coming back to the gentleman who came and spoke to us from Rubin Brown, one of the questions we often get is, "I wish you wouldn't have spent this money that was given to you by a grant. Can't we repurpose it for XYZ?" And one of the things that the auditor talked about was internal controls, making sure that if this grant or piece of money was designated for this thing, that it was spent on exactly this thing. Can you just speak to the fact that grants are restricted funds? And we cannot, they are not fungible, I can't move them around?
Yeah, so, when the city makes an application for a grant, we have to be very detailed about the deliverables that will be achieved with that grant. Reason you do that is you're competing against other municipalities across multiple states, or even here at the regional level. We're competing against every city and county jurisdiction here in the Kansas City region on, you know, both sides of the state line. So, we have to be very insightful and compelling about what it is we're going to achieve with those grant dollars. More specificity, the better those grants tend to, pardon me, tend to do. So, once those are awarded, those are awarded on the contingency that the city is going to deliver upon the request for which the grant was made. If we were to try to spend those dollars that were awarded for something... If we were to try to spend those dollars that were awarded for something other than what we had stated in our application, then those dollars would be clawed back from the city, and we would have to scramble to utilize our existing revenues and resources to pay for that.
And there's sizable penalties that come with misappropriation of grant funds. None of them are fun, and all of them end with you not being eligible for future federal or state funding in any category, regardless of which category of funding you would have received them in. Is that true?
You're, you're absolutely right. The damage is more than just losing the funds. It's putting the city in a place where future competition is, it would probably be decades before the city would be trusted to be awarded funds again.
Okay. So, I'm just, in case anybody's watching, just for clarity, when folks come up and say, "I wish you wouldn't spend the grant money that way," it is actually illegal for us to move those grant dollars around.
To be very direct, yes.
Thank you. My second question for you is, as we have been going through the process of administering this GO bond, which means we have to seek bondholders who are willing to purchase, that requires preparation on our part with our bond council, et cetera, and they have to do an evaluation of the city's finances in order to give us a rating before we can take our issuance to market. Can you talk about any feedback that we have gotten on our financial side based on what the bond market or bond marketers have told us?
Right. So, let me use a most recent example, which was a couple of council meetings ago, this body gave approval to the city issuing up to $50 million in debt to be repaid with the marijuana sales tax for police headquarters at the, the new police headquarters renovations, and then about $45 million for the construction of three new fire stations. Before those bonds can go into the marketplace, the city had to stand for a credit rating review with Standard and Poor's, or S&amp;P for shorthand. So, we had to talk about our, our revenue sources, our expenditures, what we've done to try to manage the budget in a responsible manner, how we're trying to grow the local economy, probably, you know, a 20 to 30-slide presentation before these credit rating agents with Standard and Poor. The feedback that we got back, to be, to be just very blunt about it, was a lot of positive feedback about the policies and procedures that have been adopted by this city council in keeping with and in some places exceeding industry best practice. As a management team, we got very strong marks for our management of the city's finances, talking about the conservative approach that we take to budgeting and the multiple consecutive years of adding to the city's general fund reserves as a result of that, having moved now from 4.7% to 17.4% now meeting our general fund reserve requirements. Really, the only thing that is holding the city back is, quite frankly, something that has very little to nothing to do with anybody in this room, and that is some of the past economic development debt that was issued that continues to be a, a burden on both our finances and on our credit rating scores. But, but for that, we would be very high in terms of our rating among peer cities. That said, the credit rating agency said that the longer the city continues to stay on the trajectory that we're on, a credit rating increase is possible and very likely in the near term.
So, just more encouraging financial news for the way that we are being fiscally conservative. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Other questions? Comments? Okay. Very good. Mr. City Manager, I'll turn it over to you to any, wrap it up. Any comments to wrap up the meeting?
I, I know it makes for a long nightmare, but I appreciate the council's indulgence in bringing back the sales tax committee reports, just one more opportunity for the community to be aware of where these sales tax dollars are going and the oversight work that's going on from their peers in the community. Thank you again for your time, and with that, no further comments.
Very good. Please proceed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we conclude, I just want to do a quick shout-out for Harry Truman, our president. Birthday card is back there. Mr. Rogers has been diligent, sent through the whole meeting. If anybody wants to sign it, I do believe you turn that over next month to the Truman Library. Yeah, that is next week. So, if you want to sign it, it's right back there. Otherwise, it will be at Clinton's up on the square. So, bounce down there and give it a sign. He'll be 145. Very good. Great.
141.
Very good. All right. With that, we will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.